Good evening, everyone.
Taste a little sweeter.
If you could just take a moment and take a look at your cellphones and put them on silent. If you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin with our proclamations, and the first proclamation tonight is Run for the Wall, and Councilman Jan Davis.
Actually, Mayor, I will just do this from up here. These are, well, never mind, I'll get on. Mayor, this was an important event that you gave me the honor of welcoming a group of motorcyclists to Asheville back before Memorial Day, and they were a group of veterans largely that were coming on three different tracks across the country, and one of them came through Asheville, North Carolina. It was called Run for the Wall, and they coincided with Memorial Day to be at the Vietnam Memorial, Vietnam War Memorial in Washington on Memorial Day. And they had a large number of riders came to Asheville, spent the night here, and I went out not really knowing what to expect, but I got to the Asheville Harley-Davidson early in the morning before they set off to Washington. We were the last leg of their run. Wonderful group of people, the Artemis Powell Band was playing. It was just a special occasion, and those guys were largely, I think, were veterans and were very appreciative of the hospitality that Asheville Harley-Davidson had given them, that the city had given them in planning their trip, and they just wanted to extend to us a thank you, and they gave, they had worked in advance with our staff here to make sure that this thing went well, and apparently they were very pleased with what they had, and they told me they were looking forward to this, an annual trip, they want to make Asheville a regular part of the run, and they gave this plaque to the City of Asheville. It says, "Run for the Wall," presented to the City of Asheville in grateful appreciation for the support shown to the Run for the Wall 26, 2014, Board of Directors, Riders of Run for the Wall. So that was pretty cool in itself, and I will give that to. Pass around. And then, they were so appreciative of the personal attention they got, they, I don't know if Dow was in the room, but they have a, they had a certificate for you. You should have been there.
I wish I could.
And they appreciate so much your help. And one for Kathy Ball. And they would have probably let you ride their motorcycles, too. And one for Gary Jackson. And one for the guy that makes things happen like this in the City of Asheville, John Filman. Those of you who don't know, this guy makes more things happen that happen on our streets and happen without disruption, and people enjoy what he does, and he works really hard to make them happen, so they appreciated you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jan. All right, next on our agenda, and the reason we have so many young people here with us tonight, is that we are recognizing the City of Asheville Youth Leadership Academy students, or otherwise known as KELA. And let me just talk a little bit about KELA before we do the honors. About seven years ago, when Terry Bellamy was Mayor of Asheville along with the City Council, the Council put together a program that placed high school students in internships within city partner, partner city departments and also with partnering organizations all throughout the city. And the idea was to empower students to get involved in their communities and support the students in their quest to go to college, and also to reward them with scholarships. And last year, there were 56 applicants for the KELA program, and 24 were selected. The KELA students participated in prestigious summer internships, which allowed them to learn a little bit about a career possibly for themselves. And members of the KELA class of 2014 interned with partners such as the Asheville Area Chamber of Commerce, the United Way, Mahack, Moog Music, just as an example. And each Friday during the summer, the students attended a day-long leadership workshop, which ranged on topics such as financial literacy, communication skills, and building consensus. And all of the graduating seniors will be attending four-year colleges this fall. And, and many of them have earned scholarships. Since last June, the group has completed 26 different community service projects with organizations including ABCCM, Manah Food Bank, the Salvation Army, Brother Wolf, and Habitat for Humanity. And over the years, KELA students have contributed 2,800 volunteer hours to our community, so thank you. And we're somewhat selfishly motivated in providing this program, or assisting in providing this program, because really what, what we're doing is helping shape the future of Asheville and the citizens that will contribute to the future of Asheville, that being you all. So this is really a great investment for us, and we're excited to see you blossom and grow and go on to the next thing, but we hope you find your way back to Asheville eventually and continue to contribute to your community. I'm going to ask your, your director, Erica Germer, she's with the city, come on up, to come on up, and then also if all the students want to come on up and just, you know, line up alphabetically, that's going to help me. I'm just kidding. And our interim superintendent is here, Bobby Short, if you could come up, too. And Jacqueline Hallam. Jacqueline, just Hollum just came in, I think, if you could come up. One of, the Chair of our Board of Education. Okay, I was thinking about the alphabetical. Okay, and I have up here with me our interim superintendent, Bobby Short, who is sprinting to the finish line here.
Absolutely.
And, and the Chair of our Board of Education as well, Jacqueline Hollam, Hollam, say that right. All right, we're gonna, we have certificates for each one of you, and we'll see how well you did with your alphabetizing. First I have, I'm not going to say this right, Kanaje, is that right? Allen. Kanaje, you have to say it like really fast, okay, Kanaje Allen. Okay, now, watch this, and now come over here. Okay, let's try this, and you'll just, you'll scoot on down, here we go. Okay, Brittany Bozeman. Shake, 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 here, shake, shake, there you go. Janaka Crooks. I gotta get this down. All right, just, all right, say, say this. Markevis Davis. Michael Davis. Scoot, scoot yourself down. Talia Howam. All right, Ella Heldreth Smith. Phoenix Kaiser. I get that here. And Manny Lomali Garcia. Oscar Marquez. Just to make sure. A.J. Mitchner. Simone Simmons. Promise Waltley. Yeah, we did, yeah, now you're in, now you're in a big circle. You all are going to be doing this again Friday night, where they say your name, shake your hand, give you a diploma, and I'm going to see you there, too. I'm going to be speaking to you. This is really exciting, and you all seem especially happy, and I'm sure it's because you're about to graduate on Friday, so this is real. Yes, great. Do you want to say a few words?
I will say quickly, as I do every year, this is the seventh, actually, some of the time that I've been honored to stand in front of City Council and the mayor. Thank you so much for supporting this program. We have over 120 students who have been it through the years, with a lot of scholarship money, a lot of hard work, and a lot of dedication to our community, so thank you so much for supporting the program, and I'm really proud. There are 14 seniors, the ones who are going on to colleges, across our region and our state, and again, with their hard work, it wouldn't have been possible, so thank you again for everything.
On behalf of Asheville City Schools, we want to thank you for sponsoring this program. As you can see, we have noble, young ladies and gentlemen in this group, so thank you.
I'd just like to say on behalf of the Asheville City Board of Education that we're proud of each and one of you. KELA has instilled some character traits in you that you wouldn't have gotten anywhere, but with this wonderful experience, this wonderful internship, and going to all the businesses in the community, including the City of Asheville, it's life-changing, so don't forget all the things that you've learned, and those who will be here for a year or two more, keep doing well, and thank you so much.
Okay, so I have a final request for all of you. If you could stay to the end of our proclamations and then go, because we're, the next thing on my agenda is to honor one of your classmates who's going to be going to Yale next year, so, so if you'll stay for that, and we might have one more after that, I can't remember, and then maybe, do you mind doing that? That won't take too long. All right, now you can figure out how to, congratulations. All right, I'm going to read this, and then maybe you can say a couple of things. All right, this is exciting. Whereas Asheville High School Senior Leanna Murray has been selected for the 50th Class of the United States Presidential Scholars, as announced recently by the United States Secretary of Education, Arne Duncan. And whereas Leanna and 140 other high school seniors were recognized for their accomplishments in academics or the arts, and these scholars were chosen from a cadre of 3,900 candidates from an expected 3 million graduates nationwide. And Leanna qualified via the National Young Arts Foundation's Nationwide Young Arts Competition. And whereas Leanna will be honored at the United States Presidential Scholars Program Ceremony on June 22nd, when each honoree will receive a Presidential Scholar Medallion, and her artwork will be exhibited at the Smithsonian Institution, S. Dillon Ripley Center, from June 24th to August 7th, 2014. And whereas Leanna is the daughter of Tomiko Ambrose Murray and Scott Murray, and she is a member of the National Honor Society, and she has participated in the Asheville High Student Government Association as student body president this year, and as the junior class vice president last year. And whereas Leanna is a visual artist whose specialty is oil paint portraits and collage, and she was a resident artist at the Little Black Pearl Art and Design Academy in Chicago, and she has had her works displayed at the YMI Cultural Center. And whereas Leanna has played a key role in the organization of the Asheville Prison Books Program, and plans to enter Yale University this fall with a double major in sociology and visual arts. Now therefore, I, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, do hereby proclaim We're telling parents to come on up here, proud parents. Just to finish off this proclamation, today we encourage all citizens to celebrate this day with appropriate revelry, which you've already done, and artistic festivities. Congratulations. Put you on the hot seat, Madam President. Come stand right here.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for this honor, I really appreciate it, and I'm definitely, I'll definitely be coming back to Asheville and coming back into the community that I've grown up in, so thank you.
We have one final proclamation tonight, a proclamation proclaiming June 13th through 22nd, 2014, as Pollination Celebration Week. And Phyllis Stiles is here somewhere, maybe?
Hey, Phyllis. Come on up. We aren't going to be swarmed like the last group did, I guess.
Swarmed.
Let the bee jokes begin.
It's been my great pleasure to be connected in a very small way to Bee City USA, working with CAC and with the Tree Commission these last few years, and I've watched your progress in this, and it's really exciting, and now we have other cities joining us, and all that's really, really great. Asheville is leading the country in protection of pollinators, city by city. Whereas pollinator species such as native bees, honeybees, and other insects are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinator species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy and diverse ecosystems, and whereas backyard beekeepers play a major role in sustaining honeybee populations, and whereas the City of Asheville supports pollinator populations through recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote conservation stewardship, including planting native species and minimizing pesticide use, and whereas in 2012, the City of Asheville City Council passed a resolution to become the first Bee City USA. Now therefore, Esther Manheimer, Mayor of the City of Asheville, does hereby proclaim June 13th to 21st, 2014, as Pollination Celebration Week in the City of Asheville, and encourage all citizens to recognize this observance in Asheville, the inaugural Bee And Phyllis gave, Phyllis gave me a line a couple of years ago, when we first started the Bee City here, that I have used over and over again to greet groups. Each of us on council gets a chance to go out and greet convention groups that come to town, and this is Phyllis's joke, but I've used it over and over again, and that is, we are Beer City USA, and we're Bee City USA, either way you can get a buzz in Asheville.
On behalf of the bees, the butterflies, the beetles, the hummingbirds, the bats, and the 300,000 species that pollinate our planet and make it green and feed us, I'm here to thank you for your courage in becoming the first Bee City USA, and a lot of other cities do think it's a great idea, and they're, they're going to join with us, so thank you so much for your leadership. I brought schedules for Pollination Celebration, I would like to leave with you, and, and I urge everybody to join us for Pollination Celebration, check out bee-cityusa.org, you'll see the schedule there. Thank you so much.
All right, KELA, thank you so much for sticking with us. I need a motion to continue on the public hearing agenda, item A, to a date certain, and the date is?
July 22.
July 22.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments regarding the motion to continue item A on the public hearings agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that item will be heard on July 22nd. I also need a motion to continue item C on the public hearings agenda, regarding the UDO Amendment. So moved?
Second.
Okay. Anyone wishing to make comment on the motion to continue item C on the public hearings agenda? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Those two are continued. The, on the consent agenda, is there any item anyone would like to pull out or have questions about?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, any questions or comments from council? Nope. All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've adopted the consent agenda, we are up to presentations and reports, and we have a legislative update that is our only presentation slash report from our assistant city manager making his second, second appearance, Paul Featherstone. I'm going to say that like every time. Making his 64th appearance.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight should be a brief update. As you know, it's a short session, started May 14th, and they expect to be wrapped up by July 4th. The focus this week is the, in the House is the budget, they're focused almost exclusively on the budget, so speaking to Jack today, our lobbyist, he said to expect really not much other than budget until next week. And so we're going to review with you a couple of things, bills that we're monitoring, monitoring, and some bills that have already been passed and signed into law. Two significant ones that have signed into law is the Energy Modernization Act, and that's basically the hydraulic fracking bill. There was also a provision in there that would have capped local revenue, local property tax revenue, but that was removed and replaced with a study that will come back in 2015. And the most significant bill is the omnibus tax law changes, which is a privileged license tax, so as you know, that, that passed and has been signed into law, the levy was, the ability to levy the PLT was repealed effective July 1st of 2015. For the upcoming fiscal year, it can only be levied on businesses with a physical location within the city, and it can be levied only at the 2013 to 14 rate. So last week, there was a number of us who were up at, down at Raleigh for the town hall day and meeting with the league, they asked us to present to our legislators some information on the impact of the PLT, so that is the information I'm sharing with you. Projected loss from the state figures is $950,000. The City of Asheville believes the actual loss is about 1.4 million. Based on the 950 figure, though, which we went for, for the league and presented to our legislators, the impact would be a property tax equivalent of .85 cents, 85 cents, and the property tax increase required to replace the lost revenue is an increase of 1.85 percent. And then they also asked us in three areas to identify what the cost would equate to. In the three areas, it's not combination, it is individual, so this is, they asked us to quantify it from police officers, firefighters, and miles of street paving. And the information we provided was that the total loss of PLT revenue would equal 20 police officers, which for Asheville would be two special, potentially something like two specialty units such as a downtown unit and the drug suppression unit. And how it would look in firefighters, it would be 26 firefighters, and for every 15 firefighters lost, Asheville would close a station and put one engine and one ladder company out of service. Or the third way, they asked us to convey what it looked like would be, it would equate to three miles of street paving, which is a 50 to 60, 66 percent cotton paving allocation. So that was the information we presented as we met with our legislative delegation, based on the yellow sheet that the league asked us to fill out in the moment. So other bills that we're monitoring, we're monitoring a number of bills. One of them is the Governor's Coal Ash Action Plan. There's been word that there's going to be a committee substitute, but it's unclear what would change, and it could be heard by the Environment Committee on Wednesday, but no agenda had been posted when we talked about it this morning. On the local government authority, the zoning, design, and aesthetic controls, it's our understanding that, that this has been reassigned understanding that this has been reassigned to rules, and it is not completely dead. Apparently, both the home builders and the realtors strongly support it, and they are trying to revive it. And so apparently, there's a struggle between those who want it to stay in rules and those who want it to come out, and our lobbyists had no idea where that would end up, but it is not dead. The next bill is the authority to adopt certain ordinances. This would lift the moratorium on local government environmental ordinances. This, in the House, passed first reading, and was referred to the Committee on Regulatory And then the bill regulating fertilizer removal, replacement, and preservation of trees. Rumors are that the legislator, we continue to hear the same rumor, that legislators intend to remove the trees from the bill, but it has not happened yet. And in speaking to Jack, there's also rumors that the whole bill may die, but nothing has And then the ETJ zoning, so this is one where it speaks to clarifying language on planning and zoning authority inside the city limits. There was an air, there was a bill last year that inadvertently, I believe, removed that ability. So there's a proposed committee substitute introduced to the Senate Finance Committee today that would, I'm sorry, so let's take the first part. The ETJ within the city, there's a correction in there. And then this afternoon, there was a proposed committee substitute, which actually was introduced and adopted today, to repeal the CRA.
That was today. Did it get introduced?
It got introduced and adopted.
Okay. Did you catch that?
Cultural Recreation.
Okay, yes. That was to repeal the cultural recreational authority that was only created a year ago.
A year ago. Okay, and then in other areas, there's the Ben Creek Property Sullivan Act exemptions. This would exempt the city of Asheville and Henderson County from compliance with a certain agreement made between them regarding the Ben Creek property. The information that we have on that is that is anticipated that this bill will be run next week. It passed first reading in Senate, was referred to the Rules and Operations Committee. And then two items, there was two other, so the three items that the league asked us to focus on in meeting with legislators, in addition to anything the localities wanted to speak about, one was the PLT. The other two were the film and the historical tax credits. So these are the two bills that I have before you on this screen. This one would facilitate economic development in the state, and there's a version of keeping the Film and Entertainment Grant Fund. And then the other one was the modification of the Film and Historic Rehab Tax Credits. And unfortunately, Jack has told us that it's not looking promising for these, and this afternoon, I do believe the House budget was unveiled, and it did not include either the historic rehab tax credit or the film credit. And then finally, as I said, there was a number of us who spent almost a day driving and some time there in Raleigh, and I'll let, there was a contingency of council members, and the city manager was there, and some city manager staff, Alex, was there, if you want to speak about it later. But before that, I wanted to just provide a brief update on the water update. So as you know, there was a law passed last year that would transfer control of the city water system to the Metropolitan Sewage District. The city filed suit against the state regarding that law, and yesterday, the Wake County Superior Court Judge issued his ruling finding in the city's favor, and the state has 30 days to appeal.
Yay!
So, Mayor, I didn't know if you wanted to talk about either the Town Hall Day or the water.
Sure, yes, thank you. So the North Carolina League of Municipalities, which is a, an arm, well, a group that does many things to support cities, but also has a policy branch that reaches out to the General Assembly and tries to help organize cities in terms of their policy positions on different issues before the General Assembly. They had their annual Town Hall Day last week, which is where city councils and mayors from around the state go down to the legislature, spend some time with the league, learning about different bills that are pending that could affect cities. And then each group sort of breaks off and goes and meets with their representatives. And so we had a chance to do that last week. Councilmember Mark Hunt and Gwen Whistler were able to be there, along with our city manager, and our Assistant City Manager, and our new city attorney, and I'm forgetting who else was down there, and Alex, our staffer that helps us with the legislative issues. We met with Representative Fisher, Representative Moffett, Representative Ramsey, and we were not able to connect with Senator Terry Van Dyne, but the Senate wasn't going into the session until that night. That kind of an odd schedule. And we were able to speak with them about various issues that concerned Asheville and other cities across the state that are currently pending. Of course, the privileged license tax, one of the number-one issues being discussed down there. It had already been repealed by then. And then the historic tax credits, which is important to different cities, but very important to Asheville because of our housing stock. We have so much, such a greater percentage of housing stock that qualifies for the historic tax credit than other cities do. And the film, the film tax credit. So that, those were some of the items that were discussed. We were assured that the bill pending that had a, that stripped out cities' abilities to regulate tree removal was going to, they were going to remove that provision so as to allow cities to continue to regulate tree removal. And we were generally just able to discuss those various issues. We did talk about I-26 funding, which is still a pending issue. Different segments of the I-26 project have been funded, but the key piece, which is the Jeff Bowen Bridge part, is, I guess, up in the air is the way to say that. So that's still an ongoing discussion. It was an interesting day. We had quite a lively session with all of the council members that were present down there, meeting in the legislative auditorium before Senator Rucho. And Senator Rucho is the architect of tax reform, well, one of the architects of tax reform in North Carolina, and was very much a player in the privileged license tax bill. And I guess I would characterize the conversation as fairly heated with cities who are uniformly protesting the legislature's intrusion into city control, and especially with regard to city finances. So I think it's a work in progress, and just, and continued discussion is needed. And it's vital that we continue to maintain relationships with those, even if we disagree on policy positions. You would agree. And in terms of the water, the water lawsuit, we, what we now know, of course, is that the decision rendered by the judge was very comprehensive. It's not only stated that the legislation was unconstitutional because it was really a local bill in violation of the North Carolina Constitution, that even if it wasn't an unconstitutional local bill, that the taking of the water system was for an improper purpose, and that even if the taking was for a proper purpose, the city must be compensated. So the judge was very comprehensive in rendering that decision, and that is a good thing for the city of Asheville and for citizens in North Carolina, I think. And I think that it is a correction needed to help the legislature understand their role and their place and their limitations on their intrusion into cities and how cities govern themselves. So we'll find out whether or not that's appealed within the next 30 days. Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks.
In regard to the water, this might be the place to interject, that among citizens in Asheville, I don't think anyone did more to keep us in touch with what was going on in the legislature than Barry Summers, who, at his own expense, traveled to Raleigh over and over and over again to attend obscure committee meetings where things were being decided for us over the last couple of years. And I really want to give a heads up, you know, and an applause really to Barry for his work. He really is like an A-plus citizen of this city.
And I wasn't on council, but I wanted to thank all of you for your courage and for going forward and pushing on the water issue, and the former mayor, Terry Bellamy. I'm proud of you, and I think all the whole city is.
All right, well, good, I'm just going to keep smiling for a while until. And I'll tell you, I talked to a lot of people on the phone yesterday, and I called Barry.
Right, good.
Because I knew he would be so excited. Okay, all right, so thank you very much. And the next item on the agenda, we're down, I think we're, I've lost my agenda. Are we on public hearings now?
Yes, please.
The budget, okay, so we're into public hearings. And the only remaining public hearing on the public hearing agenda is item B, the budget. We heard from our new finance director, Barbara Whitehorn, last, at the last meeting, but we're going to do this again. This is, this is the official public hearing on the budget. Please take it away. We're going to do items one and two, I assume. Do you want to do those at the same time, or do you want to do those?
We can do them however you all want to, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, this is just my little update. I don't want to go over all the information that you all have already seen, and everybody's already got a pretty good concept of. Our public hearing update, you've been through the legislative developments, I probably don't need to revisit that at all. We have discussed, and several of you have been involved in discussions, about adding a neighborhood sidewalk program to the budget for '15 and then going forward. The multimodal transportation team recommended $550,000 over the next five years within our current CIP, so that we wouldn't have to increase or try to figure out, you know, what to lose in the CIP. What we did was make reductions in other project allocations, and those are here. And I'm sorry this slide is so busy. I just wanted you to be able to see that we did make some small reductions in projects in each year to get that 550 in the neighborhood sidewalk program. But of course, the only budget right now that is being adopted is the fiscal year It's funded at $100,000 for '15, and our intent is to develop a program over the course of the next 12 months to establish criteria for building new sidewalks, do an administrative cost analysis, and review our debt capacity to see if we can't, in the further-out years, add additional money to that, because we know $100,000 a year does not go very far. So we intend to reevaluate the funding and the program in the fiscal year 2016 budget process. Does anybody want to speak to that before I move on?
I have a question about that. Haven't we had criteria for where we're going to put new sidewalks? I mean, why are we establishing new criteria if we've presumably already had criteria for where we're going to put sidewalks?
We do have some criteria. I don't know if Ken is here to speak to that. I can give you an overview, but yay.
Good evening, Ken Putnam, Transportation Department Director. That's a very good question, and we're not throwing out the old criteria at all, but this would definitely define what the neighborhood sidewalk program would be compared to the other sidewalks that we do. And then hopefully, through the process of the multimodal transportation plan, the consultant will be tasked with helping us create a computer model that we can just put the numbers in, and it'll spit out the projects. That's what we're trying to aim towards. So it's really just making sure that we've got the criteria clearly defined, and how can we use technological advances to make it easier for us as staff members.
Thanks.
Ken, can you translate into what $100,000 translates into as far as feet of sidewalks, and for the five years, the $550,000? What are we looking at there?
Yes, for the, of course, the way that we've been reporting the numbers to you in the past, as far as what we've been able to accomplish, you usually see a number in the range that averages around $45 to $48 a linear foot. Unfortunately, we can't take that same number and predict that that's what we'll be able to do with a brand-new sidewalk. So for planning purposes, we have to use a number, bare minimum, of $100 a linear foot on up, even as high as $150 a linear foot. To give you a good example, the project that we just let on North Louisiana Avenue, roughly 1,000 feet, it came in at $126,000. So that translates into the $100,000 a year, 1,000 feet of sidewalk. So in the five years, what we're showing here is not even quite a mile, almost a mile worth of sidewalk.
And not to put you on the spot, but where are we with the pedestrian master plan as far as how much more we have to do?
In the pedestrian master plan that was approved in 2004, there was a section that we call needed linkages, and that's been identified on that. We also have taken that information and put it onto the GIS system, so you can see it visually. And most of the, a lot of the needed linkages you find on all of the US highways, you know, Tunnel Road, Hendersonville Road, Patton Avenue, but then there's a good number of collector-type streets, arterial-type streets, that also have them, New Hawk Creek Road, Kimberly, I mean, the list goes on. Kenneworth is another one. So they're vital connections, and that plan identified that there was 100 miles of needed linkages out there. So what staff has done is, at bare minimum, when we try to pick out the projects for new construction, we only consider the ones that are identified as needed linkages. And then we go from there to try to compare them to other projects.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So it'll take us 500, no, is that right? 500 years to do those 100? No. I don't know.
Well, it's a long time, and you're correct. And we've, over the last several years, we have been able to whittle down around 10 miles or so of that number, which, when you look at it as a whole, it doesn't look like much, but we are very proud of the progress that we've made, especially the way we were able to team up with DOT and accomplish what we did on Tunnel Road.
Just one quick question, Barbara, before we go any further, is, when is the multimodal transportation plan expected to hit? So we can, I mean, the, sorry, Ken, you ran all the way back there, and I'm asking the question now. You know, as we're looking to figure out how we're going to prioritize and trying to create this broad, comprehensive, interconnected, multimodal transportation network that, you know, goes well beyond recreational uses to a viable transportation alternative for everyone in the city, that multimodal transportation plan is intended to address that, and of course, sidewalks are going to be one piece of that. When do we expect the plan?
And that's a very good point, and I'll just emphasize too, that, as you all know, you approved a complete streets policy. And so part of the task of the consultant is going to be to kind of create the how-to manual for that policy. So that's very important to emphasize. The other thing is, right now, we're in the contract, the contracting phase of that. We've gone through the selection process, we've narrowed it down, we're negotiating with the chosen one, and we'll get the contract out. So that work will probably begin, probably within the next 30 to 60 days. Now, the whole length of it will run about a year.
Thank you.
And I did want to state again that we are hoping, within our CIP plan, to have the capacity, as we get into that plan and start developing some fund balance, we hope to have the capacity to add sidewalks, neighborhood sidewalks, as an ongoing expenditure over Okay, just did a little recap of the budget. This is the 2014-15 budget. All funds, our total budget is, operating budget is $147.5 million. The capital budget total is around $30 million. Some of those are duplicated. The pay-go in the capital budget is included in the operating budget for a total budget of $166 million. This is a continuation budget. It meets the council key goals, no tax rate increase, and it has our capital improvement program. And this is where we are today, my usual last slide, and we are out of, one, two, three, four, five, six, we're down to number five. So we're almost done with the budget process. So that concludes my spiel. If y'all have something you want to ask me.
I'd like to thank you for the answers. We, earlier, all of us got answers to questions we pitched over the last couple of weeks. we pitched over the last couple of weeks and that was very comprehensive and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Relative to one of your answers, and that was associated with the Buncombe County tax collections, the budget went up from
Number 11?
I believe that's right.
Yes.
The budget went from $720,000 to $820,000 and you answered that the city has an agreement with Buncombe County to do the tax collections and it said a 1.5% of projected revenues. I would like to ask the city to look at whether we could do, create those bills and go through the collection process a little bit less, or less expensively than $820,000, a 1.5%. It just, that as a percentage of revenues doesn't make as much sense to me, given the fact that it really should be based on the number of bills being sent, not the revenue dollars. And given the fact that we aren't really increasing the number of bills that we're sending out, an additional $100,000 seems like something we should be delving into. And you said that the agreement with Buncombe County, we relook at it every January, so
Yes.
I would like us to explore other options.
Finance staff can do an analysis of what different cities do and different counties in the state and we'll also look at internal options.
Is that, Your Honor, might, you might want to, if that's the will of council, we would work with the finance committee and make that part of the work plan for the rest of the calendar year.
Yes, what we're talking about is an analysis at this stage.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good with that, at the finance committee.
Okay. Good, okay. Anybody else have a question for Barbara before we open up the public hearing?
I'd just like to offer a comment. And that, and it, this is the most thorough engagement the city council has had, at least in my experience with a annual budget cycle. The information provided by council has been more complete and more thorough and we're moving into this phase of multi-year planning. You know, Barbara said it, all we're deciding on this month is a single-year budget for the next fiscal year that starts July 1st. But we're being very diligent at looking four additional years ahead around capital planning, which we highlighted. And next year, I believe, we're planning to do similarly with operations so that we can think and plan more strategically about the general direction of various items within the budget. And council's very engaged and I'm glad for that, thank you. Thank you staff, Gary, Barbara, everybody involved, Tony.
Thank you.
Do you want to go ahead and do the presentation on the stormwater utility fee and will, Martha, is it all right if I combine them? Okay?
Sure, yes.
I don't have a presentation on the stormwater utility, I think you all have all the information on that. I don't really have anything to put up.
Okay, so then we'll just make clear that we're, I will make clear that we're including that in the public hearing. All right, any other? All right, thank you Barbara. So, we will open up the public hearing on the budget and this is just a public hearing, council will not vote tonight on the budget, but this is an opportunity for citizens to provide comment to council feedback regarding the budget. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Okay, Chris, we'll start with, go ahead, yeah.
Mayor, members of council, it's refreshing that you have a budget director that made a very good point, saving money in-house and doing your own billing, I commend that. My problem is, and I've got the stormwater fund, which y'all have proposed an 8% increase, I have copies here, the last six-year budget. My problem is, you know, y'all raised taxes last year. I understand, you know, but right now, the stormwater tax, the last six years, you've averaged bringing in $3 million a year. Out of that 3 million, 2 million has gone to administrate salaries. Anybody in business knows, you bring in 3 million and you're paying out 2 million to your staff, there's a problem there. Now, your proposal is to add 8%, close to it. You're affecting poor people, you're affecting every household out here. You know, your elderly, people on fixed incomes. We've already been hit one time. I would ask this council not to allow this tax to go through till you've looked at your administrative costs. There's always been questions I've had, how much money are you really spending? I don't think the public out there knows, you need to look at your water bill. Because that storm tax is added on there along with three or four other taxes that have been added on there. So not only do you get a water bill, you get a water bill with a bunch of added taxes. Now, this council says they're not gonna raise taxes on your budget, but yet you throw in little taxes here and there and you've taxed us quite a bit. Like I said, you know, you bring in three, you pay out two, with your increase, you'll have an added 1.6 million amount of money that you're gonna get from the taxpayers. My question is, where's this money going? How much have you spent? I know as developers, you know, you put in a shopping center, you put in a grocery store, you put in apartments, the developers pay for that stormwater. A lot of this stormwater is being paid for already. So I have a huge problem with this. I ask that you look at it, I think you have a good budget person here, I think she could give you some good answers and I ask that you not pass this on every citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna start over here. Try to have some system here.
My name is Saul Chase and I live on 126 Broad Street, that's gonna come later, we'll go over here. And I live just, I just live just off Charlotte Street. And as you know, I'm concerned about neighborhoods and I'm concerned about neighborhood sidewalks in particular. And I was disappointed to see that while it's nice that you added $500,000, it seems to me that if you just passed a capital improvement project budget and sold that to the citizens of Asheville, that you were going to make substantial improvements in the infrastructure. If all you could come up with was $550,000 over five years, that is not enough. That's, we just need, we badly need, the neighborhoods badly need sidewalks. But, in that budget, you are enhancing existing sidewalks on 4/10ths of a mile on Charlotte Street for $3,600,000. That seems wrong to me. As a neighbor of Charlotte Street, the Charlotte Street sidewalks are in pretty good shape. The west side is in actually great shape with the exception of the telephone poles that we have to work around, but that's not unusual for City of Asheville sidewalks. The east side's a little rougher, there are more sloped sidewalks that maybe make it a little difficult to walk. But of course, anyone who's concerned about that has the option of crossing over to the flat ones on the west side. I was interested to see if there were accidents on Charlotte Street, pedestrian accidents, and contacted Eddie, your crime specialist, and asked him to look up for the last five years, have there been? And the answer is, no. There have been no pedestrian accidents on Charlotte Street. The Charlotte Street, the budget right now refers to sidewalk and bike improvements. Now, I ride my bike virtually every day on Charlotte Street. I don't like riding on streets where there's lots of cars. I tend to ride up and through Town Mountain because it's quieter. I have no problem riding on sidewalks, or I'm sorry, riding on Charlotte Street because it's two lanes. When a car comes up behind me, I'm in the right lane, they get in the left lane. And it's not just me who feels that way. The last time there was a public hearing regarding the last idea for Charlotte Street, not one bicyclist got up and said, "There's a problem on Charlotte Street with biking." And they didn't because there's not. So to call this a bike improvement program, to me, seems fallacious. It's fine on Charlotte Street to ride a bike. Now, to hear, this list was not generated by me, this was generated actually by Ken Putnam and his, and the Transportation Department as the top needs for possible City of Asheville sidewalk projects.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Over.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, thank you for having us tonight. I'm Amy Cantrell with Just Economics of Western North Carolina. I represent bus riders who have been working since the fall of 2012 as the people's voice on transportation equality. We brought hundreds of citizens to engage our public transportation system through our 19-point people's agenda. And I'm here primarily to thank you for listening to us and for listening to so many of the bus riders who said that public transportation needs to be a priority and you've made it a priority in your budget this year. Want to thank you for supporting needed improvements to the C route, as we've heard from many citizens that live along that route that have struggled with that. And for supporting people that need to buy food, seek medical care, get to work and back home from work, and to their faith communities on Sundays. So we thank you for adding Sunday service and improvements of C route to your budget. Want to ask you to adopt those provisions in your budget this time. I have 349 signatures to a petition, just stating that, that I'll share with you all. And finally, we hope to continue to work together with the city as we've been partnering with you all and we hope to partner with our council to continue to make public transportation a priority as we move ahead and make sure that our transit system is the best it can possibly be, especially for those who depend on the art system as their only means of transportation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yep. Thanks for helping me with that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ethiopia Uurt and I'm the recently elected Vice Chair of Asheville Transit Committee and also a member of the Multimodal Transportation Commission. I am here today on behalf of the Transit Committee to express our gratitude to the commitments council has made and continues to make in improving transit. The support that council has given to providing riders with Sunday service and better service on Route C will help to make transit in our city more effective. As the Transit Master Plan highlights, Sunday service is the number one service that riders have been requesting and this service has remained the most identified unmet transportation need by transit riders. Transit 2013 survey revealed that 50% of riders felt that Sunday service was the most needed improvement to transit and that 65% of riders felt that Sunday service was a very important transit system change. Sunday service also addresses the needs of low-income populations and city residents commuting to employment or those seeking employment on Sundays. We know that some people have been unable to gain employment or were fired from a job because they did not have transportation when the buses were not running on Sunday. Others spend a great deal of their paycheck from working on Sundays for cab fare to and from work in order to keep their job. These economic challenges increase hardship and poverty for families in our community. Sunday service will improve transportation access to jobs and provide affordable transportation for the general public by addressing the need for public transportation services in and around the City of Asheville on Sundays. Council's increased commitment to building sidewalks and funding transit shelters is also worthy of note. Your support for these projects shows concern and commitment to making our city affordable, sustainable, and livable. Sidewalks are extremely important to transit as they are intricately tied to developing bus stops and shelters that are ADA compliant. This is critical to having a strong transit system. We need to be confident that our riders can safely get on and off the bus. And yet, this is just a skeleton of what needs to be done. There's still much more work to do in regards to our transit system. Due to this, the Transit Committee encourages council to keep up this direction in the future years so that transit in Asheville can grow into a top-notch service while realizing the potential of the Transit Master Plan and allowing transit to support economic development into the future by making Asheville affordable and accessible, which are key elements in a truly livable and sustainable community. We're very, very happy of what you guys have been, of what everyone has been doing and wanted to give our appreciation for that. Thank you.
Is that a book?
Madam Mayor, Honorable City Council, I always wanted to say that. My name's Steve Olin, I'm a retiree, I've lived here since 88 when I came to do some big projects on UNC Asheville Architecture and Engineering. I want to talk to you about opportunities lost and maybe opportunities missed, especially when we saw the graphics about $100,000 on sidewalks and $3.5 million on Charlotte Street. And then I think about what we're talking about and that's neighborhood sidewalks, particularly the north end, just my little part of the world, the north end of Merriman Avenue, the corner of Little Osborne Road and Lake Shore. In the last perhaps three years, there've been three accidents, two serious, one fatal, people walking on the streets. People walk past my house on that hill pushing babies in a stroller. Grandmas walk on that street, teenagers walk on that street, young couples walk on that street at night. A runner walks on that street and he climbs Osborne Hill, if you're familiar with it behind Fresh Market, with his wife on his back for exercise and puts her down across the street on the wall and they go on. But I think, we talked about B-City tonight, and I think that we should be B-City, capital B, capital E. And that should be, be neighbors. You can't be neighbors if the only way you can see a fellow next door is to go through the hedges because cars, traffic is bad and you don't want to go on the street. Be healthy, we have negative carbon emissions when we walk, we have to exercise when we walk. We meet people, we shake hands, we meet the policeman when he comes down the street, we meet the mailman on the street. We talked about pollination, the young people that were here. Give them the opportunity to walk, to walk into town, to walk to the church, to walk to the Amory, to walk to the school, to walk to the library, to walk to the stores that have now closed because local people couldn't get there, they're afraid to walk on the streets. We looked at metrics, wonderful metrics. We're taking you to bring a consultant in. If you're gonna build a bridge, if you're gonna build a skyscraper, if you're gonna build an office building, if you're gonna program 500 people in an office building, metrics are great. To build a sidewalk in a neighborhood area where there's no sidewalk right now, where you're not worried about DOT, you're not worried about traffic, you're not worried about drainage, is something that 50 contractors in Asheville with helpers that all live here and all need to earn a living can do. So can we take the neighborhood sidewalks and put them into a neighborhood plan and not have to spend two years and a lot of money doing things? But find construction professionals, take a look at the neighborhoods where we can get the people? Okay, thanks.
Do we, Maggie, we're getting a lot of feedback on that microphone, is there, is there some way to, I don't know if that happens here or in another room? Anybody know? I mean, I think I can hear it right now. Yeah, if there's any way to address that, maybe it's just me. Yes, in the back. Yes, in the back.
Mayor, Members of the Council, my name is Vadilla Sadika. I have a brief point just about bicycling. It's kind of a small point in the overall budget. It seems that you can look through the entire budget and not get a clear sense in the Transportation section how much the city is allocating to bicycling. I think it's important because cities are these global destinations that people are trying to figure out where they want to live, and if we can help people and bicycle advocacy groups and people who are really into bicycling understand how cities are changing their bicycle infrastructure by showing that through the budget, I think it really helps. Other cities are doing this, and they say, you know, we, last year we allocated 1%, now we're allocating 1.5%. This isn't, this doesn't say anything about whether or not we should change how much the city gives to bicycling. It's just to say, maybe there's a way that we can pull out the numbers for bicycle-related projects so that people can understand what the city is investing in bicycle infrastructure. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Mike Love.
On May the 27th, I presented a memo to council with about 20 questions regarding Pack Place. On June the 6th, I got an email from Dawa Hitch giving me the city fee manual and a brief explanation of Pack Place. My questions were not answered. How many of you read my email and her answer? The city council should be asking the questions I ask, and if you received the same response I got, I think you would, it's really a poor excuse for a response. Currently, the city has no legal authority to break the lease between the city and Pack Place without a significant expense penalty. Hitch's response, quote, "Finally, the fiscal impact of potential new leases is unknown as the city is still in the process of negotiation," end quote. My contention is that if the council has the authority to budget $2 million for renovations to a building that you don't legally own, then why have you not shown the expense for that building in the operating budget? I'm under the impression that when a budget is changed and that there must be formal budget, there must be a formal budget amendment voted on by the council. Is that correct? If you change a budget, doesn't it have to come before the council and be voted on? Nobody knows. It does. The 214 capital budget showed an expense of $2 million for the Asheville Art Museum under an economic development capital expense. The 215 proposed capital budget shows an expense of $2 million for Pack Place maintenance under maintenance capital expense in 2017. There's no footnote, no budget amendment showing that these items have anything to do with each other, no accounting paper trail. If the city management and the city council can do this with this expense, have there been other decisions made without showing an accounting trail? That brings in the question of integrity. Council made a big deal of the art museum building renovations being worthy of expense for economic development. Apparently, this is no longer a factor. The expense just went to building maintenance. Do we now make the assumption that the council will not require the art museum to raise their capital funds in order to obtain the $2 million as previously agreed to by the council, and the $2 million cannot be used for their capital fund drive? Gary Jackson, city manager, at council's insistence, in a letter to Pack Place.
Thank you.
With any others that would like to speak to this subject? I'd be glad to take your time.
If you have anything in writing you want to hand to the clerk, please do so. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, in the back.
To the mayor and to fellow, to the city council, people on the Rostam, my name is Roy Harris, and I have been living in Asheville now for 30 years. About six months ago, I retired from 42 years of working in manufacturing. And at the same time, I decided to park my truck and decide to take public transportation around the city. During that time, I wholeheartedly support the Sunday bus service. And in fact, just as last Sunday, I woke up, and it was raining in my neighborhood, and I was trying to decide, how am I going to get to church? Because bus service, luckily, I got there. But one of the things, I just want to say that I support the Sunday bus service. And having walked all over South Asheville in the last six months on just about every street, I also ask you to strongly consider the sidewalk improvement. I saw a gentleman just the other day stumble and fall because the sign had been taken up from the sidewalk, but the stub had not been cut off. And this was, he sort of was a tourist, I guess, and he didn't know about it, so I've learned to look for those kind of things. But there is one thing that I ask you to strongly consider, and I think that it may be number one project maybe on your capital plan, and that is the continuation and the fulfillment of Phase Two of the Grant Center. I live in that neighborhood, and living in that neighborhood, I frequent the Grant Center, the Wesley Grant Center, and I frequent all of the facilities in my neighborhood. But I see a need that we need to go back to the drawing board, and if it was a high priority on your list, to bring it back to be high priority. Because the kids in that neighborhood deserve better. The kids in that neighborhood deserve things that they used to have. And the kids in that neighborhood also, because a young gentleman asked me the other day, he said, "Mr. Harris, what are you going to do for my son? Are you going to do for my son what you did for us out of Reed Center?" And I sort of looked at him and says, "I'm missing some pieces," and that is a gymnasium at the Wesley Grant Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I will close the public hearing. All right, that concludes the public hearing on the budget. There's no vote tonight. That was just the public hearing. And I think that we've received some helpful input tonight and may be able to address some of those things staff can take a look at at the next meeting on the budget, which will take place in two weeks.
Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
Do you want to speak?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. I want folks that are here to know that I'm proud to be associated with this council and the $132 million capital improvements budget that we're working up for the next five years. It makes some significant, it will bring some significant improvements to our community. Our riverfront is going to be transformed. The River Arts District is going to be transformed as a result of this. We are bringing significant sidewalks to Lester Highway, to Hendersonville Road. A lot of improvements will be happening across our city, and I think you'll be proud of the, you know, the improvements that you see over the next couple of years. I do want to speak briefly to the, you know, the questions about the funding for sidewalks and the fact that, we had a budget work session last month, and out of that came the proposal to increase funding for neighborhood sidewalks. You heard the $550,000 figure over five years. But we've also heard our Transportation Director tonight say that there's a, that's not going to go very far, roughly about one mile a sidewalk, and the need is roughly 80 or 90 miles and, you know, and there's a recognition on council that we can't have sidewalks in every street, but the connector streets, the streets that our citizens use when they're going to school, when they're catching the transit bus, when they're going to work, those are the streets that we really need to target in the future. That's the streets that are on that list of 80 or 90. That's streets like State Street in West Asheville, or Bear Creek Road, or Lake Shore Drive, as we heard about tonight, New Haw Creek Road, Johnston Boulevard, Finnish Kennelworth Road, Beaver Dam Road, Deverview, Antioa Boulevard. There's many, many streets in our communities that we really need to have sidewalks available for the residents there. A fundamental question for me that I would like council to consider is that we're considering a five-year capital improvements program of $132 million, yet we're only dedicating about a half a million dollars towards sidewalks for neighborhoods here, and that's inadequate for our growing city here. There's a quote attributed to Joe Biden that essentially says this, "Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget, and I'll tell you what you value." And our budget right now is inadequate for the needs for sidewalks for our community here. So I'm hopeful that, as important as the rest of the capital improvements program is, that this will be something that council will reconsider as we go forward here and consider budget for next year as well, too. We can, and we should do better on this. Thank you.
I'd second that, and I'd like to make another comment on another element here. There was discussion earlier from a commenter about the stormwater fees, and I think something that I hope that the citizens of this city understand, and that is that the weather is changing. The incidence of high-volume water events is increasing dramatically. We've seen storm after storm in just the last couple of years, and as climate change comes on, the anticipation is that that's going to get worse and worse. So the need for stormwater management is increasing quite a bit. The fee proposal that we have in front of us does not raise the fee for the smallest homes. So it's not going to hurt the, it's not going to make a big difference, any difference for the small homeowner, for the, you know, the very, I think it's 2,000 square feet down. So then it goes on up, but it goes from $280 a month to, I think, $450 a month at the high end. $450 a month on a 5,000, 6,000-square-foot home is not a tremendous increase, especially if it keeps the road in front of your house from washing out, or if it keeps the house below your house from washing out, or if it keeps the streets from being flooded. I mean, this is, it's an essential safety matter for the city that we're trying to address here, and this is not an onerous tax that we're imposing. It, we're trying to address a real need. So I just thought I wanted to add that.
Councilman Bothwell, I think, for the larger homes, is it five McCray?
Five.
Yes.
Okay, $5.50 a month, so 60, 70 bucks a year for a 5,000-square-foot home. If you can afford a 5,000-square-foot home, you can probably afford that little bit extra to keep the water from your yard from washing out your neighbor's house.
And I would echo that. The stormwater fee that the city's proposing is still far lower than cities across the state. We're, we have a low rate, but we have a great need. We're a little bit more challenged than most cities in terms of managing stormwater. And, you know, I think when some people think about stormwater expense, they think about, you know, on their street, the stormwater system or the gutter, but there are actually very large infrastructure projects that this fee will be used for that are more regional in nature. And I think that it's a needed step for us to develop a strong stormwater system to handle, you know, it's, we're fine today because it didn't rain today, but I can tell you what, if we had a hurricane last week, nobody would be complaining, because that's the time when we know we need it. So we're planning for the future.
Mayor, just so that you would know, when you all adopt the budget next week, the implementation of the increase for the residential rates will be delayed for 60 days because we need to go back in and amend the stormwater ordinance.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anyone else? Would you like to, go ahead.
Councilman Pelley's reference to values being reflected in the budget, I just want to say to staff how grateful I am for y'all really being able to kind of collect where this council is and have that stuff reflected in the budget. We're doing our best to reflect those community values in our service on this council and hope to see that projected into the budget. I think y'all have done a stellar job of trying to read our tea leaves and figure out where we're at, and that's not always an easy thing to do. And I think that what this budget does in its current form is it looks at a way to provide for adequate municipal economic sustainability. We know that cities are under the gun across North Carolina, and we know we have to become more resilient as a community, and I think this budget addresses that in a number of ways. And we're also looking at the questions of economic mobility within our community and how we can help folks have both literal and figurative pathways out of poverty into a situation where they can be thriving. So as we're looking at all this and recognizing that even, even here in this process, we have very limited resources, and we're trying to figure out a way to balance all this, and as Councilman Hunt said, to think about this strategically so we're not taking a scattershot approach. As far as the transportation piece goes, I think that we're trying to find a way to balance all that. As far as the connectors go, I think we're going to have to find a way to do that. The main corridor sidewalks that we're talking about, doing that three miles up and down Hendersonville Road, and going up Lester Highway, and doing these really big, important pieces, these are going to be transformative for people's lives in a lot of different ways. And then those arteries coming off of these main corridors that are eventually going to be able to make this comprehensive multimodal transportation network function in the way that we all have envisioned it happening, we're, I think we're just going to have to keep getting as creative as we can to keep building that up. And I know that it's the will of everyone at this table to see that happen. It's just a question of how far can we get and how fast can we get there and still stay within our means. So I'm grateful for all the work that's been put in, and I think that, on the whole, we've got a really strong budget here.
Good. Now I will close the public, well, the public hearing was closed. That was the comment period. Got this down. That concludes the public hearings. We don't have any unfinished business. Under new business, I will turn it over to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Going in order on the budget, we'll take them one at a time. The Boards and Commissions Committee did meet earlier today, and we have a number of recommendations to offer for council to consider. First item, chairmanship of the Civil Service Board. The committee recommends the appointment of Marv Rosen as chairman.
Second.
Any other discussion of that? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, I didn't get who made the motion first. Mark made it, and I seconded it.
Was, was that a motion?
Was that a?
The committee recommendation, can the committee recommendation stand as a motion? And you can attribute it to me.
Sure.
Thank you. Air Quality Agency, WNC Regional Air Quality Agency, one vacancy. Dean Call currently occupies that seat. We recommend his reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Vice Mayor, may I just say a word of thanks to Dr. Call. Over the years, he's really served a very admirable, or done a very admirable job on that board. In fact, they have made great strides over the years, and I think he's been instrumental in that. And it's a very active board. They do a lot of work and appreciate his service there.
Thank you, Dan. So, did we vote on?
That was a motion and a second, but?
Motion and a second. Although, any other discussion on the appointment of Mr. Call? All those in favor? Aye. No opposed. Airport Authority, the committee recommends that we take this up at our next meeting two weeks from now. No action tonight. Citizens Police Advisory Committee. We, there was a little discussion about the evolution of this committee and the appointments to it, and the committee recommends that we postpone action on any appointments here that existing members continue to serve. No action needed. Civic Center Commission. We recommend extending We, we recommend extending this process one month and continuing to take applications. We understand there are willing applicants out there in the community that want to have their applications added, and we think extending it a month would be important. Community Relations Council, ditto to the recommendation on the Civic Center Commission. That is, with the Community Relations Council, we understand there are applicants who are prepared to submit applications. We recommend extending one month. Crime Stoppers. Committee recommend, there are two openings. Committee recommends reappointment of both Anthony Mitchell and Carl Catterjohn to those two seats.
Second.
Any further discussion of appointing Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Catterjohn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Historic Resources Commission. Two openings. Both Brendan Ross and Richard Fast are recommended for reappointment to the seats they currently hold.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one. Multimodal Transportation Commission. There's been some dialogue with the commission over the process of appointment. And, and this commission is one-year-old, and we, when we created it a year ago, we, we kind of agreed that we would have this conversation about now, about the appointment process. So that's underway, and we, the committee recommends that we take, take no action tonight as we continue to sort through this with staff. Neighborhood Advisory Committee. We have four appointments, seats to appoint. The committee recommends that we reappoint Bob Ropnak, Barbara Melton, and Elaine Povey to the seats that they currently hold. And further, that we appoint Teddy Jordan to the fourth seat. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'd actually like to have another interview there, if possible.
Let's see. Would you recommend that we interview any of these existing candidates or just one more?
It was just one more. I was interested in interviewing Julie Hansberry.
If that's acceptable to council, we could consider making no appointments. Existing members continue to serve. Will?
Well, we could reappoint the three. We're only talking about the one vacancy.
Yeah, this is just for the at-large. For the three continuing members, I'm supportive. And I would also like to interview both Teddy Jordan and Julie Hansberry.
Well, let's take, is there a motion to appoint those three?
So moved.
Second. All those, any, any further discussion of those three appointments? Mr. Ropnak, Ms. Melton, and Ms. Povey? All those in favor?
Aye.
And so I guess with a nod of the heads, it seems like we have, we'll do the interviews of?
June 24th, and I'll, I'll make those arrangements, and I'll do all the paperwork on June 24th, if that's okay with council.
Okay, so just, may you will notify the applicants and council, and we will do those interviews on the 24th. Public Art and Cultural Commission. There are six appointments to make. The committee recommends the reappointment of the following four people. Victor Palomino, Jean Ferry, Gwen Rukenbrod, and Guillermo Rodriguez. Additionally, we recommend the, the interview of essentially all four applicants for the remaining two seats. And those would be Jay Miller, Jenny Bowen, Jay Fields, and Denise Drury. So entertain a motion for that set of actions.
So move.
Second.
Any, any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Recreation Board. We have four openings, four seats to appoint. The committee recommends the reappointment of Todd Dunneck and Josh O'Connor. And for the additional two seats, the appointment of Kimberly Reed and Patrick Dennehy.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Final item was not on the agenda, but important for action. The mayor has been serving as the council's designated representative to the Asheville Riverfront Redevelopment Commission. We, the committee has considered, the mayor's request to no longer play that role and recommends the appointment of Jan Davis, council member Jan Davis, to serve, representing city council on that, and that Gwen Whistler would be the substitute or backup appointment there.
So move.
Is there a second? Second here. Any question or comment? This was not on the agenda, council, and I want to make sure that you understand what's going on here. It's fairly simple. The mayor is very busy, has been, been strained to make these appointments. Jan is very interested. He's got a lot of experience in helping create and represent the city on this commission, so that's the basis for our action. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one.
Thank you, Jan.
Wraps it up.
All right. That concludes our business. I do have some sign-up sheets for public comment. The first one is Ken Michael-Evan. I think I saw him leave, so. Not, not here. Okay. The second one is, well, the last name is Rosenthal. The first name, I can't read very well. Jeanie, Jean, Jeanie? Please. Each speaker is allowed three minutes during public comment.
I have a paper here that I've got five copies for the city council members and one for the city manager and city attorney, if they'd like one.
You can just hand them to the clerk, please.
But before I get started with any of that, I just wanted to say a big thank you. I, I don't know if it goes to council or who this actually, it goes towards. I know for myself, it's not just a statistic, it's an actual, real-life event when, 2008, the banks crashed, the economy, and people lost lifelong steady employment. And I know for myself, I ended up here in Asheville during the primary elections. And during all that time, and I don't know how long before that, there was that terrible, terrible ice war across from the library, Civic Center, and, and the Basilica. And I don't know who's responsible for taking that thing, that thing down. And now it's so much cleaner and nicer. Whoever's involved in that, thank you. Certainly is a huge improvement. Wanted to go ahead and give a status update on some of the things that I've talked about in the past, where the company called Partnership Property Management had put out this article in National Citizens Times back in, on Veterans Day. And they still, this whole thing that they had trumpeted their company on, they were, they were saying they weren't going to just have non-smoking buildings for low-income housing. They were going to make the people move 25 feet away from the building. That still hasn't happened since past Veterans Day. And instead, what they're doing is they finally let people go back to smoking in the outdoor designated smoking area. I wish they had done that from the beginning, including the electronic cigarettes, and there wouldn't have been a problem. We would have had the no-smoking buildings like we had before. But now, we still have people smoking just right up against the building. They're not 25 feet away. And Pat Shelton, she's the regional manager for Partnership Property Management. She was here in the area to let me look at my records finally, after having, they had put up so many roadblocks. And it turned out they only showed me, showed me part of the records. And, but they, I was surprised to see in the office that there was this very nice professionally-made poster top, again, trumpeting this whole 25 feet away from the building policy. And I could turn to Pat and say, you know, just look out the window. They're smoking right up against the building. And she said one thing, she said, "Well, you know, if they, if they, if they went 25 feet away, they'd be in the middle of the street." I mean, how silly. No one's telling, they have to be exactly 25 feet away. It's, they have to be at least 25 feet away. And apparently, that's what they're telling the tenants even to say. There was one lady who, who said to me, well, she says, "If we had to go and go 25 feet away, we have to stand in the middle of the street." "Oh, no, you don't." And what, they, they knew from the outset that this was essentially not enforceable because the sidewalks are closed and they could smoke on the sidewalks. And so this was, this whole thing about 25 feet was just nothing. The thing that I passed around, I'm seeing in, in this whole thing of electronic cigarettes, I'm seeing more and more stuff on the internet about lawyers becoming interested.
The next person I have signed up is Bob Spitz, Spitzer? I'm sorry.
I've come here today somewhat, it's temporaneously, I wasn't expecting, but being somewhat in the area and realizing it was Tuesday, I thought I'd take advantage of that opportunity. And this has to do with some situation that's been going on, I guess, for about eight and a half years, as I now find out, or recently found out, is still going on, regarding 76 Landvale Avenue in West Asheville. And it is a place that my son owns, and I oversee, if it matters, have an indirect, but not on the surface, legal involvement in as far as ownership. But I am the one who has been speaking for instance, that's been accepted and probably legal, I don't know, on this situation. And it involves some things that we never even knew about when we purchased the place or when he purchased the place, and regarding occupancy and whatever. And these rules, incidentally, which were, to be perfectly blunt, yes and aye to us, but we attempted to adhere to, but found it impossible to, with every time somebody came, it was a change. And this goes back a number of years. And they, and what the, there's a gentleman that spoke earlier, said that you ask the city, and I have a, a high regard for this city, although I've heard some things lately that I haven't been particularly pleased with, but not for myself, but for the citizens of the city, that nobody answers a question you ask them. They give you an answer and then wonder why you're asking for a further answer when it was never the answer you asked, the answer to the question you asked for by almost any stretch of imagination. In any event, my son is trying to sell the property, and we came up against the fact that unbeknownst to ourselves, there's a list pendants against the property. So I decided to do some investigation, found the list pendants, couldn't find any place where anybody even claimed, well, perhaps they had claimed that it was served. Asked for proof that my son was even, it was any attempt to, or that he was aware of the list pendants, and couldn't get that. When I asked the legal department, it was told that the papers were in the, in the whatever of the code department. The code department is, I guess you realize, I guess it's, this fellow case, I believe. I'm not good at the names. And he's been out.
Thank you.
All right. My real request here is simply, could I please get an answer, find out if they've been served? You're holding up my son's ability to get back roughly $300,000. And it's either court or, we get some answer from the various departments, mainly the legal department. Thank you.
We are quite familiar with Mr. Spitz, and then we have been trying to work with him.
I'm sorry? What you said, I'm sorry.
Do you want to repeat?
We are quite familiar with you, Mr. Spitz, and I, you've had several conversations with me, and we have tried to resolve your situation.
I disagree with that entirely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person I have to, signed up to speak is Steve Olin. Olin? Olin? Going once, twice. Okay. And Ethiopia Iwurt, I have you signed up to speak.
Good evening, everyone. I was here before, speaking as the vice chair of the Transit Committee. But I wanted to take the time to, to thank you personally, as just a citizen of Asheville, resident here, with the Sunday service, the Route C, and the commitments that have been made. I am wholly reliant on public transportation to, to do everything. I don't have a vehicle. And, you know, we've been talking about Sunday service since, since I got here, about almost four years ago. It's, it's been a conversation. And to, to be a part of this movement that's happening in, in Asheville where, you know, not only the residents, but, but council being supportive of, or in listening to what the community needs. And I really feel that that's important to thank everyone for because that's not always the case. And I really feel that it's, it's transformative in regards to community. And I just wanted to take the time to come up here again and just thank you, just as little owe me, Ethiopia. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Anytime you want to do double thank you. I'm good with that. I am good with that. That is my, the last speaker I have that signed up. But if anyone else?
Good evening, city council. My name is Timothy Sadler, and I wanted to congratulate and thank you, specifically Mayor Manheimer, on your work with the water issue. And I know that it's not a done deal yet, but the, the courage and tenacity shown throughout the process by the city council and also the citizens, really, I just, you know, I, this is the proudest I've been since I, I've lived here and just really think it's going to go down, you know, in, in the history of the city as one of the, the most important events. And also, you know, creates and sets the precedent for other municipalities and cities that might have to go through similar things, you know, in the courts. And it's just really a, a great, great day here in Asheville. I'm also, you know, curious, I'm personally curious as to how many hours, how many employee hours went into the establishment of the C R, the CRA, and also this water fight? You know, if that information could be made available through Freedom of Information Act, exactly how many hours have taxpayer hours, dollars that have gone into both the CRA and this water fight? It might be very instructive to the voting public come November. So just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. If not, we do not have a closed session tonight, so we are adjourned. Oh, did you want an announcement? Did you want an announcement? What?
No, no. We're just surprised.
You were in shock.
Thursday evening, 5:00, there's going to be a great opportunity to visit the Reed Center. The building is near completion, and Green Opportunities is using that as an opportunity to, to bring people in and to show everyone what we have there. And I think it's noteworthy, and those folks at home watching television, I hope you'll take, the public's invited to come over. And it's, it's a good, good opportunity for Green Opportunities.
That's very catchy.
Speaking of Reeds, I noticed that the chain-linked fence is down on the last section of the Reed Creek Greenway. They're getting very close.
Yep. That looks exciting. Okay. Are we, anything else? Nope? All right. I'll try, ready now. We're adjourned.[1799.97]